I think we're ready to call this meeting to order. This is the regular school board meeting of Tuesday, March 24th, 2015. And Member Lefler Kemp, would you call roll, please?
Sure.
Hold on, let me...
Member Harala.
Here.
Member Johnston. Member Murnekey.
Here.
Chair Saliga Punko.
Here.
Member Welty.
Here.
Member Westholm.
Here.
Superintendent Gronseth.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Crawford. Deputy Clerk Bill Hanson.
Here.
He's here. Okay, Melinda.
I'm here.
Okay, and then student representatives, Mr. Guzzens.
Here.
And Mr. Olufsen.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum? Okay, would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We are honored tonight to have our Denfeld Jazz Band, and we're going to be listening to them. We've been listening to them the last half hour, but we're going to listen one more thing right after we approve the agenda. So I would like to have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Moved by Member Westholm.
Seconded by Member Harala. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, approval of the agenda. Okay. Oh, hold on a second, Mr. Hanson. Let's see, it's right there. Go ahead.
Chair Saliga Punko and Board members, I'd like to request what I hope is a small change, and that is request to take something out of order, if you'd consider that. Mr. Pumper is here tonight to talk about the bond sale. That's down towards the bottom of the agenda under special resolutions. If you're so inclined, and we would be willing to move that up just prior to the Education Committee, I know he'd appreciate the early start, and I'd appreciate being able to accommodate him in that way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, and I think that the weather is supposed to be pretty bad down in the Twin Cities, so I have no problems with this. I don't know if I need to...
No objections.
Is there any objections to that, since the weather will be bad? Okay, so we'll just go ahead and do that. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Okay, we are privileged to have the Denfeld Jazz Band, and they're going to play one more number for us. We are so proud of how you sounded, and it's Music in Our Schools Month, and I know our music curriculum specialists will be talking about that in just a little bit, but I really appreciate the music in this district because it surpasses anything around us. So I really appreciate, Mrs. Boynton, what you've done with the Jazz Band, so go ahead, take it away. Thank you so much, Denfeld Jazz Band, and Mrs. Boynton, you really sound awesome. It was great. Thank you. Let's give them another round of applause. And I know, Mrs. Akervik, you wanted to just recognize, because it's Music in Our Schools Month, and so I'd love to have you come up to the microphone, please, and just tell us all the great music that's happening in our district.
We play with mics and music. Did you know that? Well, thank you, Chair Saliga Punko, members of the school board, Superintendent Gronseth, the directors, Assistant Superintendent Eddie Crawford. We appreciate your time tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of March's Music in Our Schools Month, and it's also Youth Art Month, and I know many of you had an opportunity to go to Art for Ed's Sake last Friday, and those art teachers were very appreciative of your time. And right now, I believe it was a great success, more people than last year, and so they're very pleased with that and able to receive more funding for their programs. Music in Our Schools Month is sponsored by the National Association of Music Educators. There's concerts and performances all across Duluth, many of you know that, being on our calendar now, across the state and the nation, in honor of music education in our schools. Thanks again to Mrs. Sandy Boynton and Denfeld Jazz Band. It's great to see them, and it's been a while since we've had a Jazz Band here, and this is actually our 10th year. This is my 10th year in music curriculum, and the 10th year that we've been able to bring people here, so I appreciate the time speaking to you today. There are great things happening all across our schools, and I'm only going to highlight a few, and I know I'm going to go over my three minutes of public time, but I will give you a formal report so that you can see some other highlights. This year, we have 18.7 FTEs in music, which is an increase from 15.5 last year, and that's due mainly to that funding for the reinstatement of middle school, and we greatly appreciate that instrumental lesson time that we have now. So that's a wonderful thing for our students, and on behalf of those students and families, we thank you. In June, we will have many of our music teachers working on curriculum writing, common assessments and unit planning. We appreciate the support of Dr. Mike Carey and Curriculum for this opportunity to work together. We are completing the fourth year of, or the second round of receiving staff development grant funding from the Purpits Center and the Minnesota Legislative Funding to support arts educators across northeast Minnesota, and I serve as the supervisor for that grant. And I believe this year, we were working with $45,000. We're going into our next project proposal for this next two-year cycle, and we are hoping that many of those projects are approved and that funding can increase, because as many of you know, that's the only staff development funding that we really receive as arts educators. All of the music teachers in the district participate in some sort of community band, choir or orchestra. They're singing, they're playing, as well as conducting their own groups besides their teaching days. They volunteer in community projects and put countless hours of extra time in supporting the students and families in Duluth. Some of the great student achievements, and this is just a few, Honor Choir Day was on March 14th, and we had many, many students, 4th through 6th grade, from some of our elementaries, also from Ordine East and from Lincoln Park, attend. This was the first time that they had done that in collaboration with the Lake Superior Youth Choir. They received a grant from the Minnesota Legislature as well. And it was a day-long workshop for not only the students and then the teachers, there was a concert that culminated the day. March 18th was the MSHSL Large Ensemble Contest, and many of our Denfeld Concert Choir, the Advanced Women's Choir, the orchestra groups, received superior ratings. Ordine East has had many students selected for All Honor Band Choir and Orchestra Days held at UMD this year, and that goes from usually November all the way through the spring. Josh Peterson, who's a violist at East, won the Young Artist Competition with the Duluth Superior Symphony Orchestra. Very highly competitive audition process that he went through for that, culminating in a performance with the symphony last month. The Pipestone Singers were just here, sponsored by our Indian Ed Department and Mizidi House. They spent a day in a master class workshop with their Unity students, which was a wonderful time for those students. The Myers Wilkins Elementary Willbeat Drummers that I am happy to lead. We are the opening act for the Duluth Homegrown Festival this year. That's never happened before with the student groups. So, I'm inviting you on April 26th, it's at Teatro Seco at 6:00 PM, and we'd love to have you down there, and that's a really exciting thing. So I think this is opening the door for many of our Duluth groups. We're excited about it. I think the adults are more excited than the students right now, but they know what that means. There's been many special concerts by our elementary music classes and choirs. This spring, there'll be many more, and we invite you to attend. As many intend our music classes, come in and visit. We'd love to have you. Most importantly, the highlights that we have is the achievement of students and their musical growth throughout the school year. It's especially going on every day in their music classes that you all don't get to see. They are learning, they're playing, they're singing, responding and composing to music. To us as music teachers, we have struggled with the student-teacher ratio at times, and also with funding sources to provide for our programs, and the students aren't necessarily at the level that we want them to be at or we expect, but the teachers are working hard, the students are really improving their skills, as we have seen tonight. It's wonderful. And we have a lot of support by the parents, families and community. So on behalf of the music department, the district-wide music committee, which includes school board member and also parents across the city, thank you again for your time and your support.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Akervik. I know you do so much behind the scenes and in the classroom with our music department, and I know that music is a huge part of the curriculum, it's a huge part of who we are as a district, so it's great. Thank you so much for all that you do. And I love having the students here because it reminds us that we are here for students. And just a couple of things before we go on reading and approving of the minutes, just remember that we are here for kids, and we want to model behavior that we would expect our students and staff to adhere to. We want to be consistent and respectful when dealing with staff, community and fellow board members. So just a reminder about that, to stay with the agenda. And I'm sure we're all prepared for the meeting because we've had a couple of weeks to really look at everything, so when we're coming here, we should have all done our homework and asked some of the questions, and if there's any other little things, but we should be all ready and be prepared when we come here, and be a good role model for our students with good behavior. So, we are going to go on to reading and approving of the minutes. Can I have a motion for the minutes of the regular school board meeting? Okay, moved by Member Harala. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Westholm. Is there any discussion? Member Welty.
Thank you, Chair Saliga Punko. On the second page, under Public Comments, the first speaker was a young gentleman named Tim Davis. I would only request that in the final minutes, we make that sentence describing what he was concerned about just a little bit more clear currently. It says, "By using best practices to address the, not only financially, but in having staff of color," perhaps we could just amend that to read, "to address the financial impacts on children and hiring staff of color," or something along those lines, just a little bit clearer.
Okay, is there anything else? Member Johnston? Let's see.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, back on page 15, we had a discussion on the Waddams about the third paragraph down. During that discussion and during the rest of the meeting, I think it's really important to model behavior, as the chair just said so eloquently. I was either interrupted or had my microphone shut off about eight times the last meeting. I had three points of order that were ignored and were not even addressed. I handed out to all the members copies of the Roberts Rules of Order, as well as the thing that was handed out by MSBA, it talks about what points of order are, that yes, they can interrupt a meeting, and yes, the chair must address them. I have two comments from page 43 and 44 of the Roberts Rule of Order, which is on the dais. It says, "Although the presiding officer should give close attention to each speaker's comments during debate, she cannot interrupt the person who has the floor, as long as that person does not violate any of the Assembly's rules and no disorder arises. Presiding officer must never interrupt a speaker simply because he knows, she knows more about what the matter is speaking." That's reported several times in Roberts Rules of Order. Somebody has the floor, they have the floor. I also have a point of order, and I'll read what the Roberts Rule says on page 247. "A member thinks that a rules of the Assembly are being violated, he can make a point of order, thereby calling the chair for a ruling and enforcement of the regular rules." Also want to read page 651. What happens if the chair doesn't do this? If the chair ignores a point of order that is not dilatory, the member can repeat the point of order a second and a third time, and if the chair still ignores it, the member can, standing, can immediately put the point of order to a vote without debate. Likewise, the chair ignores an appeal appropriately made and seconded, a member can appeal, repeat and appeal the appeal, and if despite it being seconded, the chair ignores it again, the member can repeat it a third time, and if it's again seconded, but it's ignored, the chair can immediately put the appeal to a vote without debate. So I'm asking for the chair to follow basic rules of order, that every chair knows about that, and to have the minutes correct to have the points of order in that.
Okay, we're going to go on to reading and approving the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, they're approved. And one other thing I just want to mention, as a board, we are required by law to follow Minnesota statutes, and then we also follow, so that is the first thing that we follow. Second thing we follow is board policy or practice. Practice really has been, because some of our policies are out of date. The third thing, to keep a meeting running, we do Roberts Rules, but they are not a law. So just wanted to clarify that, because we just use that to keep a meeting moving, and sometimes we get in the drudgery of going on about something that lasts quite a long time. So we're going to move on to school and community recognition, and I know Mr. Crawford has something he's going to, he's going to address us and introduce someone to us, so got that on, and so we can get started. A board, if we can go down below?
I'd ask Jordan to step forward. Members of the board, this month, I'm pleased to present Jordan McMillian from Denfeld High School for recognition. Early this year, Jordan was recognized as the 2014 Youth of the Year by the Boys and Girls Club of the Northland. Established in 1947, Youth of the Year is the highest honor a boy and girls' club member can receive. The award recognizes outstanding contributions to a member's club, family, school and community. The award recognizes service, academic success, moral character, life goals and public speaking ability. Jordan is an amazing and thoughtful young man, and one of Jordan's speeches, he talks about his vision for America's youth. I'd like to read you these excerpts. He says, "My vision for America's youth is change, to be able to stop profiling people based on their appearance, age, gender or the color of their skin. I want my generation and many more to come to be able to walk down the street without being criticized and shown hatred. My vision is to start changing the way I think and set examples for the ones who are younger than me. I would love to see people like me make it in life. I want to help them reach their full potential. I believe that one day this will happen and everyone will see eye to eye." He finishes by asking, "Can you be the difference?" Congratulations, Jordan, for everything you've done. Thank you.
Reminder that you have three minutes, and Clerk Lefler Kemp will be timing you, and we want to just make sure that we recognize the civility code. And Member Lefler Kemp, did you want to say something? Go ahead.
Oh.
I got you on.
Okay.
I turned you on.
I wanted to make sure. We also read the mission of the ISD 709, and again, the purpose of Independent School District 709 is to provide a quality education that prepares all students for successful lives as global citizens in the home, community and workplace. We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement and responsible use of resources to create Duluth public schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world.
Great, thank you, Member Lefler Kemp. Okay, we have some speakers. The first one is Richard Paulson.
I'm here tonight to speak a little bit about the audit, as I have in the past. I guess I'm giving it one more try, seeing that you're trying to remove it. I've given everybody here a copy of the State of Minnesota's petition and request audits information. It's a very simple procedure, which has been ignored by the district for many, many years. It is time for the board to pass a resolution for a state audit, since the last state audit was done in 1994. I can understand why the administration wants to change Policy 3215, removing any state audit. I have reviewed the district's audits back to fiscal year 2007, stating the same figures and data that are in the audit for our fiscal year 2014. Examples of that, allowance for uncollectible receivables has been $45,862 since '07. It's there all the time, it's a boilerplate. Next one is unrecorded accrued vacations, has been listed the same since 2007 on every audit differential. Auditors have stated significant deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting since fiscal 2008. The district's corrective action plan monitored by the school board for compliance has never happened for this deficiency. How can any board member deny a state audit? It's beyond me. So I would ask you, please reject any changes to Policy 3215. The district and the community needs another set of eyes. Thank you.
Good evening. I would also like to raise some objections to the changes proposed to Board Policy 3215, State Auditor's Review of Finances. Once again, majority members of this board are disseminating information to the public that is oversimplified and substantially false. One majority's members' declaration that the state doesn't do audits of school districts, that this change should have been made long ago, is just another example of this majority parroting administration. I called the state auditor's office and checked with the audit manager over the veracity of these boisterous claims. She said, quote, "We haven't done a school audit for a while, but if we were contacted by a district, we would definitely have a discussion with them about it. We do have the authority to do an audit." There were only two caveats. She added that the auditor's office would only do an audit if it had the time to do one at the moment requested, and that the state would not put in a competitive bid against a private firm. Fiscal control of the district is the board's responsibility. This board has failed to do due diligence to that responsibility for as long as the current chair has been a dominant voice in this room. Good public policy is once again being compromised. Recent fiscal meltdowns of a number of national banks should have woken up anyone responsible for private or public funds. Overchumy relationships exposed between regulators and these big banks should have been a revelation for the entire country about the importance of putting safeguards in place to oversee the overseer. Most private auditing firms are undoubtedly honest and follow standards, but there is always some danger that the warping motive called profit could entice them to wink and cut corners to keep the client happier and increase chances of keeping a lucrative contract. It is just good fiscal management to have a new set of eyes with the profit motive removed, come into an organization and look things over periodically. Board Policy 3215 was put in place by responsible boards of the past. We have not had a fiscally responsible board controlling the agenda in this room for nearly a decade, and I have no reason to hope we'll get any better performance on this issue. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, administration. This is addressed to several of you. I found it very interesting that the Duluth News Tribune article of 318 talked about the capacity of all of the buildings that we have, and yet they're not at capacity and the classrooms are overcrowded. So then we spend $42,000 to find out, maybe we should move the boundaries. Hmm. Find out, after we spend another $42,000, that we don't need to change the boundaries. Well, we haven't had enough money to hire enough teachers, so we have overcrowded classrooms. I think that's a, I think that's a pretty good evaluation of that, certainly from other people I've talked to, they've thought the same thing. So, mismanagement, ill-planning, wasting of my money, I keep seeing it, I've been seeing it since 2008. And then I come to community board meetings to see one of the administrators come in here at the last minute with a great big, grandiose presentation, spend five point some million dollars, the spend left over from the RED Plan, some of which that money is going to be used to put drains in the locker rooms surrounding the brand-new pool at Ordine East. Really? None of you even question that, except Art Johnston. My husband was a contractor, I've said it before, he'd never get away with that kind of mismanagement of the funds that he had, the plans that he must have followed. What are you going to do to that floor? Lift it up in the air and put these drains in to connect to the piping and the drainage and all that? Certainly, you're going to have to do a certain amount of a disconstruction. You put the drains in after the fact? I don't think so. Mr. Wyder, I'm sure glad that you didn't win my position, or you would have mismanaged more millions of dollars, because you were in charge of this, and you should have seen this as a problem.
You have to keep this civil, please.
I am being civil.
Don't go after someone else.
He can be held accountable for his mismanagement.
That is one of our staff people.
That's correct. I'm a taxpayer and I pay his salary. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gronseth, school and community recognition? Or no, I'm sorry, reading communications?
I will.
I will. There.
There were no official communications, and, well, as Mrs. Akervik said, this is Music in Our Schools Month, and we've had a lot of parents and grandparents visiting some of our music classes around the district, and again, we want to thank the Denfeld Jazz Band for being with us this evening, and they sounded wonderful. I think there's still plenty of opportunities for people to go out and see some of the music events and music classrooms in our schools, and you can contact... And you can contact your child or grandchild's school to see what events are going on that you can go and see. This month, we also had the demographer come and present his findings. And one thing that I want to point out is, you know, I've heard about the difference between what we were saying last year about our demographics and our school enrollments and what was different with the demographer study. One of the major pieces was the sophistication of that study. It was a statistical analysis, including information from the city, from the county, GIS information, that really got down to the whole of the population. While generally, we are trying to do our projections based on a cohort model, so how many first graders do we have this year, and what does that translate to second grade for next year, and so on up. So a really in-depth study like this is much more efficient and effective than what we can do on our own. So it was really good information, and we will be sharing that information at the Think Kids meetings that are coming up within the next couple of weeks. This week, we're training our facilitators for those meetings so that they can help get input and feedback from the community. And in addition to the demographic information that will be shared at the Think Kids meetings, we're also going to be talking about a very serious issue that happened a few weeks ago, and that was the racist incident at Denfeld High School. We're going to be talking about racism in our schools and in our community, and getting feedback and input from the community about what are the most effective strategies that we can use going forward, and what things need to take priority for us in addressing racism in our community. So I'm looking forward to those conversations and getting good information to move forward. Ironically, this month, we also hosted Malcolm X's daughter at Myers Wilkins Elementary, and Ms. Shabaz had a wonderful event for the families and had a great opportunity to talk to our students and to our parents and our community about moving forward in the future. Oh, I was also going to say with the Think Kids, if you go to our website, you will find a schedule for all the meetings. And if you're not able to make a meeting at your own school, you can go to any meeting at any school. And if you're not able to make any of the meetings, you can also go online and view the same information that we're going to be sharing and share your thoughts online. If you're not able to go online and do that, you can feel free to email me, or call me, or write me a letter. However you want to give me your information, I would be more than happy to include that in the data that we gather during Think Kids. I believe that's about it.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Gronseth. And now we are going to move on to our special resolution, correct, Mr. Hanson? Okay, so if board members would turn to the back, and Mr. Hanson, if you want to...
Oh, Melinda. Oh, I'm sorry. That's in that part. Thank you. Okay, hold on, guys. Who wants to go first?
Thank you, Melinda.
Jude, do you want to go first? Okay. You are... Okay, Student Representative Gussens.
Yeah, the past month, we've had a variety of different student groups going to different competitions. We had the One Act play get to state, and they were successful there. Just recently, our robotics team went to a national tournament, and I know they saw some success there, and it's always a lot of fun for our team to go every year almost to nationals. We've had one of the biggest things in the past month, as all of you are probably aware, is that our hockey team, despite all odds and all expectations of so many people, that we actually did succeed, and we got to state, and then we weren't expecting to win against St. Thomas, and then we beat St. Thomas, and then semifinal game, and we beat Edina, which I think was just an absolutely amazing experience for everyone to finally beat their rival there. We did end up losing in the state championship, but still, second place in the state isn't bad for... But a lot of people were kind of not expecting that much, but it's really a phenomenal thing for the whole school. Different things, our speech team, both East and Denfeld, combined speech team is going to the section tournament this coming weekend, and hopefully, we'll see a number of students make it to the state tournament later in May. Then we also have currently, the East is putting on a play called Almost Maine, and that'll be coming up in the next month or so. And talent shows are happening right now, hosted by the Acapella Choir. There's actually one going on about right now. And there's another one, if any of you would want to go, tomorrow night at 7:00 at East High School. They're always a lot of fun, so I would definitely encourage anyone who wants to go to definitely go to that. Another thing with the... Our East is currently hosting a food drive right now. That's going well. And with that, we're hosting a March Madness basketball tournaments with different students can sign up with teams of three to five people, and that just kind of helps raise money for the food drive. We also, everyone's really looking forward to prom coming up on April 25th, and then the ACT, not looking forward to that as much, but just a couple of days later. But that's kind of just the two, a couple of big things coming up. So, yeah.
I have some happenings from the Western Front. As Superintendent Gronseth mentioned earlier, there was an incident at Denfeld High School. A racist Snapchat went out, and many of us, if not all of us, have heard about that. While very shocking and upsetting to everybody at Denfeld, being that it does not represent our school's mentality, we're using it as an opportunity to learn. This event sparked the Stop the Bullying, Post the Positives campaign. This is where students take posted notes, your average ordinary posted note, and write positive things and post them around the school, give them to their friends, family, or just post up on the locker room for somebody to find. Over 3,000 posted notes have been written on and posted around the school so far, and more posted every day. Also, our 10th grade class was given the opportunity to attend the movie Selma at Cinema 2, thanks to a generous donation from the Clayton Jackson McGee Memorial Committee, as well as Cinema 2 itself. On some lighter-hearted news, our robotics team got eighth out of 64 at the DECK Regional Competition, and third out of 28th at the Central Illinois Regional Competition. We have nicknamed our robot this year Lambda Larry. Coming up on March 27th, we are having our Spring Fling Dance. There will be a dance, as well as activities, to try and fling ourselves into spring. We thought we had it, but here comes this weather. As Jude mentioned, we had our solo ensemble competition that was hosted at Denfeld. All of our musical groups that participated there received a superior rating. A week later from that, we had our large group competition at Grand Rapids, and both of the choirs from Denfeld, as well as the choirs from East, all received superior ratings at that competition. That's my news.
Thank you so much. I love hearing what's going on in our schools. I just really appreciate it, so, thanks. It just reminds us, there's lots of activities happening in our schools. Now, Mr. Hanson, if you could bring Mr. Pumper up, and we will go through this resolution. So go ahead.
Board members, we met a week ago tonight for a special meeting to hear about the bond sale results. In your folder tonight is the information on a couple of pages that Steve is going to go over, and then also the resolution on many more pages. But I will just defer to Steve Pumper at this point. Again, Steve is our financial advisor from PMA, and I'll let him present his information for us on what's happened in the last week.
Thank you, Bill, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Gronseth. If you don't mind, before I get to my agenda item, I just want to say, as you can imagine, I have the opportunity to go to travel the State of Minnesota and go to quite a few board meetings, and it is not uncommon for me to go to a board mem... or, sorry, go to a board meeting and have board members recognize the hockey team, or the football team, or the wrestling team, or sometimes even the robotics club that may have won something. But it's a rare treat for me to come to Duluth. This is the second time. I remember a couple of years ago, I was here and heard your orchestra playing, and today I heard your jazz ensemble, and it's wonderful. And so I just want to give you kudos, and certainly the students and the instructors. It was wonderful to listen to, so thank you. So now, back to point of order. As Mr. Hanson said, actually, back on February 24th, the board took action on a resolution to authorize the sale of bonds, or refunding bonds of your 2008 All Facility Bonds. And again, the intention is to lower the interest on the...
Mr. Pumper, just, excuse me, I wonder if, do we need to pass the motion, or do the motion first before we have discussion?
Probably.
I think we need to read the resolution. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No problem.
So I think we should do this. Member Lefler Kemp, would you read just the basic resolution here?
Resolution providing for the insurance sale and delivery of $44,300...
Forty-four million.
Forty-four million, 320,000 general obligation refunding bonds, Series 201-5B of Independent School District Number 709, establishing the terms and conditions, therefore directing their execution and delivery, creating a debt service fund, therefore awarding the sale, therefore of... And then be it resolved the following, and then it's B-315-3249, March 24th, 2015.
Thank you, Member Lefler Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Harla. Okay, now, we're going to have discussion first from Mr. Pumper, and then we'll entertain questions, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Again, the purpose of tonight's resolution, and the original resolution that was passed on February 24th, was to refund the outstanding debt on your 2008 All Facility Bonds with the intention of lowering the interest, which means that you'll collect less interest from your taxpayers over the remaining life of the bonds. So again, lowering the tax impact for your residents. The... It was a competitive sale, and bids were received on March 17th. And I was here a week ago Tuesday then, to present the findings of that competitive sale. When you do an advance refunding, there is a statute that indicates districts have to meet a test of saving at least 3% on the refunded bonds. When the lowest bid came in the morning of the 17th, it did not meet that test. The savings were only 2.5%, roughly. There is a statute that allows districts then to reject all bids and negotiate to try to get a more favorable settlement. The board took action on that resolution on February 17th, and we were able to then work with the lowest bidder, which was Wells Fargo, and on March 19th, come to agreement, which the results are at your table. So the new negotiated sale provides a present value settlement savings of 3.074%, which indicates gross savings in dollars of $1,808,764.58 over the remaining life of the bonds, including this year. It's 13 years left, but the majority of the savings will be over the remaining 12 years. And if we look at that on an average savings over the remaining 12 years, it's just over $150,000 annual savings that the district will be collecting less on interest payments for those bonds. The resolution that was passed on March 17th allowed for the superintendent or director of finance and one of the board officers to enter into a bond purchase agreement, should we reach a successful sale, which happened on the 19th, and that bond purchase agreement was signed by Vice Chair Harla and by CFO Mr. Hanson. And tonight, you have the resolution, then, the full resolution in front of you to ratify the sale.
Thank you. Are there... Is there anything else, or are there any questions at all from board members? Oh. Member Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Pumper. I always appreciate the work you put in on this. I have one question. I see the attachment A on the packet that we got. I hope you have that attachment A. It looks like this. Has the actual tax levy until the remainder of the bond up to the year 2026.
Yes.
Comparing that to another handout I have, which is debt service comparison, it seems to be different numbers. Could you just tell me? I'm looking at the fourth column on this chart, and I thought they should be the same number, but maybe, could you just explain why there are different numbers, or...
The attachment A would include the 5% additional levy that you're required to levy as part of state statute as well. So you're levying the total debt interest plus 5%.
Okay, so this is the actual payment, then?
Correct.
This is from the bond sale, is this one, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, seeing no lights on. All those in favor of Resolution B-3-15-3249, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Pumper.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, and drive safely. Hopefully, it'll be all right tomorrow.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to report of the standing committees, and go to the Education Committee, Member Harla.
Some paper here. Thank you very much, Chair. We had another Education Committee that was on the night of a township election, so a lot of robust conversation, and glad that we had two weeks to follow up if we had additional questions. With regard to informational item A1 for the East student presentation, the student actually wasn't there to present, so hopefully, he can come by in the future. We can, if we could learn about what he wants to... If he's doing another public presentation, please let us know. The second piece that we did have a presentation on from Dr. Lake was our 2014 graduation data. Really robust conversation, looking at some areas where we've had an upward trend and some areas where we have room for growth within graduation data. I did appreciate the follow-up, not only looking at race, but also looking at gender breakdowns, Dr. Lake, so thank you for taking the time to follow up with that late last week, or, no, I think it was actually the week before last. When you followed up, I appreciate that. Sure, members of the board will have additional comments about that. But what I am heartened to know is that we have measures that are set in place throughout the district, Dr. Lake, and our curriculum, and all these different specialists that are looking more and doing litmus tests for students throughout the year on how they're doing and on their achievement, and we're more rigor and communication and understanding about student data. So glad to know that we have that. Our next piece was a community education presentation. Jay Ressler joined us, as well as our Director of Early Childhood Learning, and Tracy Klana from the Key Zone Program, from the... She's with the YMCA, and they do a lot with our Key Zone programming. I can't say enough how impactful it was to hear about our schools as community schools. I knew about our community education programs, I'd heard about it, but to hear about all that our community schools are offering, and bringing people into the district and doing to support our students, it was phenomenal. I just, I want to, where was it? Last year, or just with the 21st Century Learning Programs, which is a grant that we receive, 946 students are being served. But there's thousands of students being served, thousands of families, and what I'm glad to know is that with the building of these new, with our new buildings, we have community members using them. Their... Member Welty talked about taking dance classes in the schools. I know Member Johnston has taught classes. I know that just, there's been swimming. Swimming is able to happen in the schools with Chair Slegapunko in the summer, and so that we can have community schools and community in our schools, as well as our schools being out in the community, is very impactful. And I would just say to folks that are 8 to 80, and before and after that, that we have space for you, and things are happening for you in our schools. So I would highly recommend folks head onto our website for our community schools and see what's going on, and look into those. So thank you for that presentation. Number four, or A4, was our kindergarten roundup dates. We were provided kindergarten roundup, actually, tonight is Piedmont, and happened to know, have got a text from a friend who's future kindergartner, had a big smile on his face and a big, some ice cream that he was eating. He was very excited to head to kindergarten next year. So Eli, we're excited to have you, as long as many other students throughout our district that are coming in. We, the way that we're... One of the questions asked was, how are we getting the word out about these? I know there are different ads that we've had on TV, in our websites, our schools send out info, we work with our early childhood programs, direct mails, Facebook, Google Ads, TV, internet, internal communications and external communications. We're trying to reach as many folks as we can, as we can... We're trying to reach as many folks as we can, as we can with kindergarten roundups. And one statistic that I heard was that for our Ojibwe immersion classroom for the coming year, even without pushing, without a lot of outreach, we already had twenty-one students signed up. So I'm so excited that that's an investment that we've made in our district and at that school. So just our kindergarten roundup dates, if you know of an upcoming kindergartner, please let them know the dates. A few have already passed, and I'm sure that our schools are open and available for anyone if you have a kindergartner coming in or you're encouraging someone to move to town. So our kindergarten roundup dates. The next piece, it was a discussion that was regarding the challenges that are facing Denfeld. This is a conversation that was not, that is not taken very lightly by this board or by our administration or by the teachers at the school. In fact, I'm encouraged by, that we were able to have the beginning of a conversation this month. I appreciate that we had our board as well as Principal Conyers and two teachers from Denfeld that joined us. And there were a lot of discussions that happened from this, and there was a full report in the paper following, but, and I'm sure board members will have a lot to say about it, knowing how we like to comment. But I would say at the end of the day that the process for how this is going to be responded to from a district, from a district point of view, is that we have quality steering, first of all, there's many ways that we respond to this, but one piece that we're able to do is to look at, we have quality, as quality steering committee, where when there are issues where teachers or staff have, they're able to bring it together to talk about how we can work to address some of the problems. And so that's been brought forward to the quality steering committee that Member Lefler Kemp serves on and as a representative for the board. And that's just, that's one piece as well as many other pieces our district are doing to address some of the learning loss and those pieces. So that is my overview for the discussion regarding challenges facing Denfeld. And I would just say as well that the board is not done discussing this. This isn't something, and our school district is not just done discussing it once it comes here. In fact, it's kind of the tip of the iceberg of many other discussions that we have throughout our large district, our over eight thousand students and three hundred and fifty-five square miles with twelve hundred staff. So lots of people are talking about it. We just happen to be the public face of that discussion. With regard to the number six for East, sorry, for high school grading periods, it was presented to us by Mr. Crawford and by Dr. Carey that they're looking into, that there is a study, that they're studying the possibility of adjusting high school grading periods to go from six to nine weeks in the school year. This is not a decision that has been made, it's nothing that has, but it's something, it's a place that they're headed. One of the pieces that was brought forward in discussion when this came forward is that how are teachers going to report to make sure that there's timely feedback and connections, not just in the midway through period, but how are we going to every two weeks, or how are we going to write it into those communication pieces that there's timely feedback? So that was one piece that I had heard. So glad to know that, so this is not a new conversation, it's something that's been brought forward for a couple of years, and so appreciate Dr. Carey and Mr. Crawford bringing it forward to continue that discussion. Again, lots of discussions happening on the iceberg, we just see the tip of it, so glad to know that, we talk about the tip of it here. There were no grant applications. Chair, would you like me just to move the action items or do individually?
No, because they're not resolutions.
Oh, they're not resolutions, okay, thank you. So presentations, items requiring approval. The first was for the achievement and integration budget for 2015 through 2017. Mr. Howes came to present to the board, and there are not a lot of changes within this, in fact, and the changes that we would make would have to go directly with the integration plan that we have written for the district. Mr. Howes has worked very closely with community members and staff members to ensure that the changes that have been made within our, that have been made within our integration programming align with student success and student standards. I would highly, highly recommend that folks head to ISD seven oh nine to see that integration plan. I know there's been a lot of communication and conversation in our community about how we're supporting our students of color, and that is one, that is just one area that we do to support students of color and students on free and reduced lunch. So that is one area, and this is an item that we're looking at approving the budget for the 2015 through 2017, 2015, 2017. So it is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above item. The next piece is our extended field trip requests, Lowell Elementary School going to Wolf Ridge, very exciting time for them and seeing the partnerships for them. So it is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above extended field trip request for Lowell Elementary. And then we have a few diplomas. The first was Malcolm Tyree, Jacob Michael Marciniac, Austin Thomas Mukabust, Cecilia Marie Colburn and David Joseph Berg. It is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above diploma requests as well as future items, and I move my report, Chair.
Thank you, Member Harla. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Lefler Kemp. Is there any discussion? Oh, Member Walty.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item one A five.
Member Johnston?
A two and one A three.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll start with one A two. Go ahead.
So Chair, you're right, we do have a lot of discussion on this, so thanks for the preamble on that. This was a fairly good article in the paper on this. Dr. Lake, thank you for putting the information on genders out there in a quick manner, thank you. I'm going to talk about it because I am concerned on it, and we've talked about this before, but it's important that the community knows so we can try to address this, and I'll try to make it fairly quick. Back on page, first of all, oh, I did have a question for Mr. Lake. Could you tell us how this study differs from the NGA study, and if that, do you think that would have made much difference in the actual results as well?
Oh, hello. Okay, perhaps slightly. Ours is an adjusted cohort model that Minnesota uses, where our students who are in residential care are not included within our cohorts.
Okay, would you think that would make much difference for our numbers? Now, say let's take out the ALC, would that make much difference? Again, I'm trying to compare, because I know the Department of Education uses, I think, the NGA, or they came up with that methodology, and I'm just wondering how, how do you think we compare with the final numbers, say particularly for our high schools?
Okay, the rates that I reported are the rates that Minnesota Department of Education reports. So if you were to go on their website on their state report card, that's actually where I received the data and pulled it and put it into this presentation, so it's consistent with how our state calculates it. The National Governors Association has a slightly different way of calculating it, different from Minnesota, and like I said, in Minnesota, it's like an adjusted cohort rate where it takes out students who receive residential treatment.
Okay. Do you think that, I know we talked about this about a year ago, I think, when the Department of Ed released that data, they had Minnesota in there, of course. Of course, that data was from 2011, because it takes the bureaucracy a while to get that reported upward. Do you think it would be a fair comparison to use those numbers from that report to this, or do you think they're comparing apples to oranges?
I'd always be more comfortable comparing if we're using the same methodology.
You don't think it is then, or?
The National Governors Association calculation is slightly different from the adjusted cohort model that Minnesota uses and reports through Minnesota Department of Education.
Okay, do you think that makes the numbers difference? I'm asking you, is there a significant difference in that, or is it one or two percent, or is it twenty percent, or?
I'm always more comfortable making comparisons when the calculations are the same. Otherwise, it's just my opinion.
Okay, just got a few comments. First on page three, which is the graduation rates by subgroup. Again, first, the good news is American Indians, Native Americans, we had an increase. That's a fairly small group, the cohort group, I think, is about twenty and that, but still, it's, whenever we see an increase, that's really cool. It's still not very good, unfortunately, forty-five percent is, of course, very, very bad, but we had an increase, so that's, that's good. Looking at overall in the state, the state compared, the state number was fifty-one percent on that, so it's, we have a ways to go on that, meet the state as well. On blacks, we had a slight decrease, I don't think it's statistically significant decrease, but again, it's still at a dismal forty-six percent. That's a small number, too, all about twenty in that cohort group, I believe. In the state, that compares about sixty percent for the state graduation rates for African-Americans. So we got forty, forty-six compared to sixty, it's not, not real good. On whites, again, we're forty-nine, and the state, that compares to sixty-eight, so we're, again, not quite as good as we'd certainly like on there. One of the, the numbers I asked to, from Dr. Lake to add, were the males and the females, something that hasn't been reported by anybody, but yet is another big concern that I think we really have to address as a school, as a society, is the graduation rates for males versus females. Last year, we were males sixty-nine percent, females eighty-one. Overall, in the state, the graduation rate for males is seventy-nine percent, again, versus sixty-nine percent, or about ten percent less for male graduation. That includes, of course, ACL as well, as it does change our numbers a little bit, but I went back and looked at the Denfeld numbers and the East numbers, which are here, Mr. Lake. And Denfeld even, we have higher percent, that's seventy-one percent males graduation rate, eighty-six percent females. Certainly, it's good that the females are higher, but the seventy-one percent as males is not acceptable as a society, and I think that's the number which is being looked at more and more nationwide, is that our males are not graduating from high schools in the numbers they should. And this, of course, bears out that data, and this isn't unique for Duluth. East High School, though, is doing a little bit better, they're graduating eighty-seven percent of their males, ninety-seven percent of the females, and again, is that disparity, again, between East and West is just not acceptable, when we have seventy-one percent of males in Denfeld graduating versus eighty-seven percent in East graduating, is something we really, as a community, as a school board, as a society, have to look at what is happening to our males, where are our males falling through the cracks on this? Again, I'm not trying to take away the emphasis on the low graduation rates for blacks or Native Americans, but I guess I'd like, I'm kind of scared to ask as how many black males are graduating, or black Native Americans, it's probably going to be pretty small. Looking at the graduation rates from Denfeld versus East, again, I represent West Duluth, the numbers graduating from Denfeld, males graduating from Denfeld was eighty-seven. Males graduating from East, hundred and seventy. In other words, Denfeld is graduating almost half of what East High School males are. It's really, really, really a concern. Yes, we have more numbers than East, but if you look at the racial, the racial is really quite striking. If something, I think as a board, we'd really have to look at this whole male, female, or male graduation rate, not so much the females, as well as our minorities. One other thing I noticed, and two, I did get the numbers that Dr. Lake has as well, and, went back to five years ago on the numbers. This isn't here, this is the numbers, Dr. Lake could supply the numbers for, I went back and got the raw numbers as well. Five years ago, Denfeld graduated, and their graduates in their twelfth grade class was the same size five years ago as it is this year. Remember, we've just combined one from three high schools down to two. East has graduated about seventy-three more than they did five years ago. But again, my point in bringing this up is these numbers are so important, because again, it shows that after we've even combined two schools, me representing West Duluth have always this best concern as what is happening to Denfeld, we've talked about it a lot, we'll be talking about in just a minute again, and when I see the numbers, it makes me kind of scared. And that's, so that's all I have for that. I would ask the board here to have more discussion on the community of color graduation rates. The males lack thereof graduation rates, and of course, again, the East-West issue between our schools.
Mr. Grandseth, Superintendent.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, first off, agree, we have, we've got some work to do as a school district and as a community about closing the achievement gap, about addressing the needs of students. You know, that's why it's in our district-wide continuous improvement plan in several different capacities, and why we've done things like implement PLCs for all of our teachers K through twelve, so that they are getting together and talking about student data and finding the individual needs of our students, and making sure that we're putting interventions into place so that, so that we can make progress on those goals. I also want to just talk about trend data a little bit. As we know, it's hard to take one number out of time, and we did look at some trend data, and we've seen that for the past five years, that number has risen, and it's gone down, it's risen, and it's gone down. So what we know is that that number hasn't stabilized. So while this year does represent lower graduation numbers, certainly than I'd like to see, and then we had last year, it's not the sign of a larger trend downward, it's more of a, not random either, but fluctuating rate. And that also has to do with the number of students in each cohort. So the number of American Indian students, the number of African-American students, when it's a smaller cohort, a smaller number can make those numbers fluctuate quite a bit, and that's part of that fluctuation that we've seen. And I'm, you know, I'm glad you said it's not unique to Duluth, because certainly statewide, nationwide, we're all working on closing the achievement gap. And I really want to stress that we need to be careful about the numbers that we're comparing, like Dr. Lake was saying, you know, comparing the Minnesota MDE information to the Governors Association, they come to those numbers differently, and so we can't really compare those. And I'm not saying that these aren't issues that we need to work on, they certainly are, but I think that we have to be careful how we talk about them so that we are presenting correct information. Kind of like, you know, the Denfeld and East male numbers, you know, there's under a thousand students at Denfeld and over seventeen hundred at East, and so comparing those two numbers, just outright numbers, gives a different picture than if we were talking about percentages. And I know that you recognize that, but when we put those numbers out there, people get the idea that those numbers are comparable, and so we need to be careful that we're sharing correct information with that. And I just have to mention that you called Dr. Lake Mr. Lake several times during that. I know she looked around for her husband a little bit, but I knew what she meant, but just had to mention that.
Thank you, Superintendent. Student Representative Olsson.
One question about the unknown category on what would be the probably fourth page, fifth page in the packet. Would a student who had completed three years at an ISD seven oh nine school and then gone to another school to finish, and they did graduate from that school, are they shown in this data, or are they taken out of that? or are they taken out of that?
Um, they would count in the graduate numbers. What happens is, when a student enters in ninth grade, they enter into a cohort, and we would expect four years later that they would have graduated by then. Every student, when they leave our system, they get an end code in our system. So the end code might be that they graduated, it might be that they haven't graduated, but they're continuing their education, maybe that they moved to another state, it might be that they truly dropped out. The students that have the unknown code are students that we weren't able to track them down to find out, was it that they dropped out, did they go out of state and not re-enroll, that we just weren't able to find them, to find out what happened, we just note that they're not in our system.
Um, oh, Member Johnston.
Apologize profusely again. Every once in a while, mine doesn't work great, I'm guessing I'm dialectic, as math guys. But I would like to say, though, the numbers, I did use percentage, we got seventy-one percent of males graduating from Denfeld versus eighty-seven. Seventy-one percent, that was I'm dialectic again, versus eighty-seven percent in East, so I did use a percent.
Okay. Um, 1A3, Member Johnston.
Well, I just wanted to say thanks for the Community Ed people, it was always a good presentation, and the thing I forgot to say when I was, when we talked about it a little bit at the, at the committee meetings, was how easy it is for me, I guess as a school board member, I can go in and log on to all the computers, my profile, I can get everything to pop up on the, on the smart board, even though I haven't got the aspect ratio right yet on it, but it still pops up all my circles when I have Earths and Spheres or oblong, but besides that, it's, it's a great system, so I wanted to just pass on to the school how good that system works, particularly for me, I can just go log on to any computer in the district and get all that to work, so just wanted to say thanks to the Community Ed people doing that.
Okay, the next, oh, Member Harla, go ahead.
I forgot to say that for folks that don't have access to internet, Community Ed also puts out a newsletter, or a magazine, newspaper, I mean, that is great, so that is another resource as well, too, that you can get at your local library or request down here.
Or comes in the paper, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to 1A5, oh, you had for this, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Just something positive, we've often been asked to, to bring positive things, and I thank Education Chair Harla for pointing out that I commented on my, the dance classes, we took it in the education classes, and, and I will say that tonight, at the beginning of our meeting, when the Denfeld Jazz Orchestra played, it was hard for me to contain myself, I was busy doing a rumba, and I was looking around for a partner, so it's probably just as well, they just did one rumba and, and then, and called it a day. I also would like to point out that Mr. Olafson's predecessor, Kobe Trumble, was one of the soloing saxophonists, and it was nice to have him back in our midst today.
I just have to point out, both of our former school board members from last year were both in jazz bands from their school. All right, Member Welty, you have 1A5.
Yes, and I don't have a question. I, it's a concern that I raised at, at the, at the, the meeting. We, we happened to schedule the Education Committee meeting on the same night that there were township elections, and because of state law, we are not allowed to, to overlap those, those civic obligations. That meant that with some very big topics, we were, started out with just a fifteen-minute discussion, and some of these were very big, and a number of us, over the course of the last month, have been champing at the bit to have a chance to talk with the, the teachers at Denfeld, who'd expressed some concerns about difficulties there, and, and then to find that we only had about seven or eight minutes to talk with them, although the chair kindly added a little bit of time back towards the end, so we were able to extend that conversation. It wasn't enough, I, I appreciate Chair Harla saying that this is just the beginning of a conversation, but I will note that at, at this point, we haven't, we haven't scheduled any, any continuing discussion, but Principal Skoniers has let me know that I am, I'm welcome to go to Denfeld, and I, I plan on making some stops there, and I'm sure that she would welcome other school board members making a, paying a visit on Denfeld.
Member Johnston.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I wish we could have had more time to discuss some of this here, too, we didn't have a lot of time on it. I'm looking forward to this being a, an extended discussion, I think as just, just a start, I wanted to thank Principal Skoniers for being there, we had two teachers that were there and talking about it, and I'm concerned about that, I want to emphasize again, that when I bring up some of this stuff, I say, put light on some of these things, I'm not criticizing the teachers or the administration in Denfeld. I think that the teachers have been very clear that they're concerned about the lack of preparation that some of our students in Denfeld, or coming up into high school, in this case in Denfeld, are, are getting. I, I do want to say that I was disappointed, though, that we haven't had a more thorough discussion, faster on that. Originally, I believe it was February third, we had twenty-four teachers that sent us an email, they asked to meet with us, and we did have two teachers come in and talk to us, but they also said that they couldn't really speak for all the teachers, and I think that is very important, that we have complete, we honor their request to meet with the school board, and I'm still asking for that to happen. We can do that at Denfeld, I'm certainly happy about that, they don't have to come see us, I'd be glad to come and see them. I like going to Denfeld, it's a nice place to go. But one of the things that, again, I'm going to quote one of the teachers, and I think it was kind of telling for the discussion, and he said, "We are trying to teach trigonometry to kids that can't add or multiply," that's a direct quote. And again, that's, um, being a math guy, certainly understand his difficulty in teaching trigonometry to people that can't add and multiply. And again, this isn't speaking about our teachers or about Denfeld, this seems somehow we got to get these cohorts in lower grades who can, working our way up, so when they get to high schools, they can fully get into and take trigonometry and calculus, you name it, we want them to be able to do as well as history and science and English and biology as well, of course. So, I, I do want to continue that discussion, we didn't have that on the discussion of, of the statements that the teachers said in their letter to us, of whether, this was from a science teacher, whether passing, uh, whether passing physical science should be reinstated. These are, the teachers made that claim to us, we didn't have a chance to talk about it, eventually, we don't have to talk about it now, but I want to know, do the teachers know what they're talking about or not? If they are, I would certainly like to have some discussion on that, to see if that may help shed lights on where we can, where we're at now, or where we should be going.
Member Harla.
I failed to mention this in my report, so I just want to bring up a couple of things that were highlighted, and one of the biggest pieces was that our students are, it's mandatory that students take and pass chemistry or physics to graduate. And this is one piece, when we look at curriculum statewide, that, that's not possible for some students, and it doesn't mean that something similar couldn't be passed, that could be, that it, we need to, we need to be encouraging our legislators as they're deciding what types of curriculum are mandated statewide, that, that we have high rigor in our expectations, but that we are able to help students take classes that are going to lead them into different careers, and it may not be toward chemistry or physics, it may be some sort of science or math-based curriculum that will have some of those similar components and standards, but that are able to be implemented in different hands-on ways. I heard recently, and I don't think, know if this is correct, but if someone to say, a principal from Deer River said, that if every single standard in the state of Minnesota was lined up end by end, and every single kid had to take it, our kids would have to be in school for another twelve years. So, looking at that, how are we as a district taking a stance to ensure that we're educating our kids in the best way possible? That being said, this is one piece in high school. Changes that have been made in our district, we have specifically with, with students from Denfeld, which is a really great school, and I think sometimes, and we have really great schools district-wide, so as someone who went to Central and had to hear about how terrible the school I went to was, we have really great schools, so I'm going to, I'm going to say that. And we, but that means also to say that we have kids that are struggling, and some of the things that we're doing with these struggling students are, is to address early on, so it doesn't mean that students that are struggling now are left behind, but early on, to prevent this. One, looking just specifically at Laura MacArthur, it's now a celebration school, having gone through years of struggle with new leadership and changes in investment in these kids, we're seeing changes in student data. Looking at Lincoln Park Middle School, the principal at Lincoln Park Middle School is looking at a stronger community schools model, to ensure integration of community and school programs, so that students have wraparound care and support services. Two specific interventions that, that are not small for our district to do, they're not small for us to do, but that are going, it doesn't mean that this data is going to change next year, it's not going to change maybe in five years, but slowly. And, and what I appreciate about this is that, as we look universally at all of this data, it's our job to look individually at each kid, too. And so we have litmus tests throughout the year for our students, to ensure that they're on track, just like changing the elementary report cards like we did earlier this year, to talk about and communicate with parents what kids need to know, rather than those really big-picture items. So I would encourage us to start, as we look at changing policies and, and adopting curriculum, let's talk about how this will address this, and then when we adopt a legislative platform in the future, how are we talking with our legislator about what we need for the kids that are our kids? So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Harla, because it does come down to funding and the success, and we're doing a lot of great things. Member Lefler Kemp.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add, and I, I had shared this at the Education Committee, and I do serve on the Quality Steering Committee, representing the school board, and again, those are monthly meetings where teachers come together throughout the district, and there's kind of Quality Steering Committee and Quality Leadership Teams, and while I think we need, as a board, to, you know, keep discussing challenges facing Denfeld, what I'm heartened about, every month that I go to these meetings, and, and is that we invested in the PLCs, the Professional Learning Communities, as a board last year, as part of our budget decisions, and it's very heartening, the way that the teachers are talking, and they're, they're communicating with each other, they have the time set aside to do that, and so, um, sometimes I get frustrated when, when we say nothing's being done, when I see monthly how the teachers have been coming together, and, and that these, the intention of these Professional Learning Communities are, are just that, to allow for this kind of discussion to happen, and I guess I just reiterate that again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and vote on the whole Education Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. All right, next committee would be the HR Committee, and that would be Member Murneke, hold on, oopsie. Oh, something just went.
Nope.
Hmm.
Hit the left button. The left button, are you ready?
Doesn't work.
Should you hit that left button?
Which left button?
There you go. Thank you. That's the best one, that defaults, I'm on now. Okay.
Something's wrong, Bart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on Tuesday, and our staffing report, certified leaves two, certified long-term subs two, three, certified retirements, eight, certified temporary increase, one, non-certified appointments, six, non-certified extensions, one, non-certified leads, six, non-certified permanent increase, one, non-certified promotion, one, non-certified resignations, two, non-certified retirements, four, and non-certified temporary increase, one. Okay. We then move, I'm sorry about this, my, to approval of two contracts. Would you like me to read them, or read the, the resolution? Yes. All right. We read the resolution, and we can discuss it. Resolution 315-3250, resolved by the School Board of Independent School Districts 709 and St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the collective bargaining agreements between Independent School Districts 709 and Executive Employees Association, a summary of which is in the hands of all school board members, be approved and adopted for the periods July 1st, 2013, to June 30th, 2014, and July 1st, 2014, to June 30th, 2017, inclusive. That the chairperson and the clerk of the school board be hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the school district. I move HR 315-3250.
Thank you, Member Murneke, that's been seconded by Member Harla, is there any discussion?
Of?
Um, let's see, I push this one, I don't know which one is first, oh, I guess, Mr. John, Member Johnston.
Thanks. And maybe you gave this to me already, but you always have the little summary cost sheet there, that spreadsheet, was that the one you gave on this one, or have we got the ones for these three yet?
Hit the left button again, oh, not that one, the left button, there you go. Yep. Oh, no, here he's on, here, can you turn off, can I do it again? There you go.
Uh, yes, those, the cost sheets were distributed last week via email.
Okay, it's on email, then, okay, thank you, I will look at that.
Okay. Member Welty?
Yes.
Go ahead, you're on.
My, my question has to do with nomenclature, we have a, a resolution aimed at the Executive Employees Association, and we have two collective bargaining agreements, one is for the Duluth Districtwide Instructional Administrators Association, and the other one is for the Duluth Principals Association. Which of those is the Executive Employees Association?
Oh, sorry, I, we're having issues here.
Actually, are you, are you reading that out of the resolution, or are you?
No, we got the two contracts.
We have, I have two contracts, are these the ones, one of these were?
Oh, no, no, those are, okay.
Those are oldies.
Those, yeah, those were completed and printed, so you received a copy of those, so from the district that...
No wonder I was confused, the red lines were sent out.
Okay.
The, the red lines were emailed out last week, I believe, Thursday.
Great, we did, we did. Okay, is there any other discussion on this? This resolution, let's approve Resolution HR 3-15-3250. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Okay, Member Murneke, go ahead with the next one.
We now move for approval to mod, approval to modify District Civil Service Rules, Resolution HR 315-3247. And, Member Lefler Kemp?
Okay. Wait, is, oh, is that a second?
No. Well...
Are you moving this resolution? I'm sorry, I'm kind of distracted.
I'm not going to move it, we're going to open this up to discussion, I'm not moving...
Well, we need to, we need to make a motion and, and second it, because we'll have discussion.
Well, then, I'll move to table, HR 315-3247.
I think you have to move the motion first, don't you?
I think you can move to table, you can move to table, not move the resolution.
Move to table?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second table?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, hold on, I'm just, okay, so it's been moved to table and seconded, okay, discussion. Okay, I think you're next, okay, go ahead, Member Lefler Kemp.
Okay, yeah, well, I also was going to raise tabling this, and I first want to say to Mr. Leiter, I really thank you for the wealth of information you've provided, as we've been having this discussion on the civil service rules, and the most recent information you just gave us as well, and, and being open to questions, and being available for questions, so really appreciate this. I've been struggling with wrapping my head around these changes and the process with these changes, and I, I know I've asked some questions at the last few meetings, just about the civil service board... Service Board and, and kind of some history and the role. And, you know, it's complicated, and I think the Civil Service Board has some important, has an important role. And, and so changing rules and, to me, is an important change. And so I'm just trying to make sure we have a clear process and that we have, I know there's different interpretations to the rules in the Civil Service Board, and I just feel like I, I need to, to think about this some more, and, and, and that's why I had asked, or wanted it considered tabled. I just wanna make sure we have a good process and an inclusive process, and I, I'm just not really, I'm not really comfortable with the resolution as it is right now.
Member Walty?
Yes, I did a little bit of investigation about this, and I will say that my wife, about 35 years ago, worked for the city in the, in the Personnel Department, and she actually did some of the civil service job descriptions for the city. And I remember at the time, she and I both thought it was rather unusual that the school district would be part of the city's civil service, but this all apparently goes back to 1933 and state laws of that time for a large city such as Duluth. In doing some quick research, it appears to me that really the, the city has not been doing an awful lot of writing of the job classifications since around about 1970 or so. Maybe, Mr. Leiter, you could, you could elaborate, tell me whether the city has maintained changing job classifications for the school district? That's a question.
Chair Slade Pankow, members of the board, the, the current rules that are out there for the Civil Service Board in Duluth to follow were promulgated in '71 by this school board and then provided to the Civil Service Board to guide their actions. Part of those rules relates to the classification of position descriptions. And I would respond to say that the classification descriptions that were recognized and adopted in '71 are, for the most part, still what is recognized and existing, even though we've had internal district processes to update and, and our classification descriptions. It's been a very difficult process to have the Civil Service Board recognize them and update them, and that's some of what resulted in their criticism of the school district for having such antiquated rules and not updating them, and suggesting that we need to do so, which is why the rules are before you at this meeting to be updated.
And if I could continue with some concerns. The, I've read two attorneys' letters, one Jane Poole from Andrew and Bransky, representing the, some of the staff that are concerned about a change to the civil service policy that the school district has, and then one in reply from the, the district's own long-serving attorney that has looked over these things. And I, I guess what I, I deduce from this is that, to a really remarkable extent, really for the last 10, 15, 20 years, the, the city's civil service committee seems to have taken kind of a standoffish actions towards the, you know, how we classify our custodial staff, which seems to be about the only staff that applies. All of our other staff don't really fit into the civil service categories. And I noticed that Ms. Poole relies heavily on a very antique ruling, not from the, I think she says that it's from the, what, what is it? The, the director of something, but it's, it turns out it's, 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 it's a legal opinion from an assistant, and it's only advisory, and this is 1933. We, as a district and as a school board, have been looking quite, quite deeply at how we structure our, our, our custodial staff over the past several months. And I, in reviewing both the letter from Mrs. Poole and Ms. Poole and Beth Storsley, it seems to me that there's a pretty good argument that the city's civil service really doesn't have any authority. They can, we can ask for their advice, but they don't have any power to intervene and tell us to do things differently. It's really an advisory role. And in the light of all of the staff changes that we have attempted to do to coordinate with our, our, our new facilities and, and managing them efficiently, it seems to me that the last thing we want to do is handicap that, that department with, with antiquated rules that, that can't be forced to apply based upon a 1933 ruling that doesn't really have the force of law. So I'm, I'm quite prepared to, to, I guess, wait, there's a recommendation that we table this, but it just seems to me that, that, that delay might cause problems. And if, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Mr. Leiter what a delay might mean for all the reorganization that we have been looking at for the past four, five, six months.
Chair Slade Pankow, Member Walty, members of the board, this has been a fairly prolonged process. Since July, I've been having conversations with people in our maintenance unit employees, also with the school board, as we've talked about updating classifications, and for that matter, how facilities management is organized. And I can also relate to the last 23 years, 'cause I'm close to having been here that long in my tenure, that the process required to update and move new classification descriptions forward has been very tenuous and difficult. And so we currently have eight vacancies that need to be filled. Two of them are at our highest level since August and before. That, those are our engineers at our high schools. Anytime you fill one of those, or two of those vacancies even more so, there's significant movement below in order to fill those vacancies. And I really believe that it's important, as people are considering those promotions or hirings, that it's, it's clear what their task duties and jobs will entail. And as you've referenced, we, we are evolving, we need to evolve. We've got changes in facilities, we've got changes in size of our organization. Our old descriptions don't adequately provide us an environment where there's an efficient, effective practices and procedures that serve to operate and maintain our school buildings. So I would like to see those positions filled. I've been looking for that for the last six months, and it's, it's really become a long, prone-out, prolonged effort to, to get that accomplished. And I think we need to move forward, and I, I looked at the changes in these rules as one thing that could help us clarify what the Civil Service Board's role is and allow us to move forward with accepting and recognizing these classification descriptions and using them as a basis for promoting and hiring employees.
Thank you, Mr. Leiter. Member Harala?
So, Mr. Leiter, thank you very much. And some of the points that are covered, one of the reasons I moved to table is just to, wanted some more discussion within the board, but also to underst, with some feedback from community members and misunderstandings, I don't want to end up in the same spot that, that some other folks have. I think that there's some more discussions that we need to have with folks within this bargaining unit and would be willing to help join in some of those, in, in that conversations. I do respect, one, a couple of things that are updated since 1971 that you've talked about, was that a lot of the questions in the Civil Service Code are actually answered in PELRA, so it doesn't actually go to the Civil Service Board. So those are a few things that, that are changed. And also, that this is, this is the only bargaining unit that is looking to write their own job descriptions. And so how are, how, how do we have that discussion as a board? And I would, I, and also just, there's a, hearing that there's some confusion with the Civil Service Board, and I understand from a Civil Service Board member that they will hold special meetings as needed, like they had, I think they had one last night, they had said. So, so changes, but also knowing that changes in duties in the buildings and our job descriptions haven't been up, so I'm actually talking from a lot of different angles. There are a lot of changes in duties in our buildings, and our buildings are different. I know you spoke about the fireman position and fireperson position, and you could talk a lot about that, but, but changes in people being able to do different things as needed, and from a business perspective, and, and just overall team perspective, how are people able to address the things and concerns that come forward? And so I just ask, and knowing that was, did you say something like maybe eight positions are needed to be filled district-wide, or seven or eight? So, so I just, I ask our board chair if there's a possibility of holding a special meeting with regard to this, so we can have, or even a committee meeting, so that we can have some of those conversations to ensure that we're able to support what Mr. Leiter is asking for, but also make sure that we're bridging the gap with, where there is, it seems to be a communication gap that, that we're experiencing.
I think that's something we'd have to talk about. Member Johnston?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the administration, Mr. Leiter, for the work that he's put in on this for a long time, and this, hopefully, we're gonna get this moving, and, you know, it's kind of sounds like the board is kind of looking to table this, and I certainly apologize that we can't move faster on this, but it sounds like the, the Civil Service Board has kind of tabled this too. It hasn't helped either. But when I do get a letter from an attorney, unfortunately, it does make me read it, and it does cause me concern, and I think it's probably caused all the board's concern here, that we should certainly be a little bit cautious in what we do here. One of the things, and that she, she, the attorney, mentioned, and I'm assuming it's correct, is that this collective, or the Civil Service Board is being mentioned in our collective bargaining agreement. That's where their link is. I don't know what the impact of that is, I haven't looked at it, or if this is good or bad for the union, but yet it seems like something that we should probably look at a little bit, and hopefully get it resolved soon. And hopefully, we can get the members of the union sitting down and talking to us. I think this shows the importance that, that we, as a school board, must be involved, in particular when it comes to difficult negotiations, or potentially difficult issues like this one is potentially becoming. So I would certainly encourage the board to take a proactive role in this, and again, I don't want the administration, again, to take, to carry this load totally on their shoulders. This is one of the board decisions that we can work on too, so I hope that we do that as a board.
Member Murneke?
Yes, we'll be voting to table it or not to table it, and then we'll move on. I think we can have a discussion on this. Human resources tends not to have a lot of issues. We can have a discussion of this and, and perhaps have some members of the, the community involved in this come and speak to us.
Member Walty?
Yes, I recall at the Business Committee being, asking specifically for feedback from, from our employees, and wondering if Mr. Leiter could, could solicit that so that they could have some chance to weigh in. I, I simply, I guess I have to take the letter from the attorney, Jane Poole, representing their interests, as the primarily, the primary arguments for this, and, and I am not persuaded that the Civil Service Commission really, is really anything other than something that's rather antique, something that has not been, not been dealt with extensively by the, the city. And I'm reasonably content with the explanations by our attorney about the inapplicability of the civil service, and even where it is written into the, the contract, it does not seem to put a hold on decisions that we make in terms of classification. So I, I would prefer to proceed with this, not, not table it, but should that happen, I would request that we have our attorney, Beth Storsley, come at the earliest opportunity to, to give us her, her take on, on this, so that we can follow up with questions to her.
Superintendent?
Yeah, I think that you did hear from Beth Storsley.
Mm-hmm.
It's.
Well, yes, I do have.
Okay, okay.
But in person for questions.
Okay. I was just going to confirm that the, the Civil Service Board did table this. In part, and Mr. Leiter can jump in and correct me if I'm, I'm leading astray, but I don't think that's the case, they tabled until you made a decision, and so now you'll table, and it, we're, we're kind of in a catch-22 here that you're, that each organization is waiting for the other organization. And I, I just wanna say that I think there's a clear difference between classifying a job that has a description and creating a job description. And I, there are several job descriptions that we've altered in the past year or so as we have reorganized the district-level employees, cabinet-level employees, and we've, we've tweaked job descriptions so that it better fits the needs of our district. We're working with the counselors right now to do the same, looking at job descriptions. But I think that it's a managerial right to write a job description, and I see it as the Civil Service Board to take that job description and tell us classifications within it. I, I know that it can be a controversial topic, and that the city certainly had some controversy surrounding its discussions with it as well. So I understand both sides, but I just wanted to share my thoughts on the topic as well.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Who do you want the questions to table?
Okay, we're going to vote on tabling the Resolution HR 3-15-3247. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. What is that vote? Can I have everyone raise their hand? If you are in favor of tabling it, raise your hand. Okay. That's four, and then against tabling it, three. So the motion to table it passes four to three. Now, the one thing I would say about this is, I don't think we should let this wait too long, because I know we're trying to fill positions, and it's not fair to our employees to have this drag on. And so I think I would request that this gets done either in a special meeting or something, so we can, we can talk about that. Member Murneke, you want to continue with HR?
Yes, and I'll also recommend that maybe we could do this at the next HR meeting, and then have a special board meeting after to make a decision on that. But that's, that's a recommendation for the chair, she can think about that. Number three, we approved the superintendent's review that we're gonna be using, and there are no future items. I move acceptance of the Human Resources Committee report.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Harala. Okay, is there any more discussion other than what we've had? Seeing none? Member Murneke, you don't have your light on, right? Okay. We'll vote on the entire Human Resources Committee except for what we voted on. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. All right, the next committee is Member Westholm. Let me just turn you on here. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. All right, the Business Committee, regular school board meeting on March 24th. Number one, financial report, the usual reports that we have, Waddam reports on page 33, fundraisers, I believe there's only one mentioned this month. And then, of course, number two, bids, RFPs and quote reports. We did have, we do have one fairly important quote, and that's from Voyager Bus Company. I don't know if we, want me to go through all of that first, or?
It's a quote, so.
Okay, it's a quote. Okay, and then policies and regulations. We've been talking about this one, the Policy 1098, Gifts to Employees and School Board Members. And I know we talked about tabling this on our last, there were so many questions, so many issues still bandied about that. that we don't have answers to that, or we haven't decided on that. We, we maybe are going to consider a motion to table that, uh, policy 1098. And then policy 3215, state auditor's review of finances. On page 44, we have attached policy 3215, and that's the state auditor's review of finances with the recommended changes for the first reading. And I know we took out a significant amount of the old language and simplified it. So, uh, that's, uh, policy 3215. And then on, uh, four, contracts, change orders and leases. I'm not, uh, we didn't have anything on, on our agenda this month. And then resolutions, again, we have some resolutions, uh, to approve and I don't know-
Member Westholm, do you want to just go through each resolution?
Sure.
Let's just go ahead and do that.
Okay, resolution, um-
Page 45.
Page 45, we can go to 45. And on page 45, uh, we have, uh, resolution B-3-15-3244. And this, uh, resolution, uh, want me to read it?
You can just read the first part because it's just one.
Whereas Minnesota statute 465-03.03 requires the school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in terms prescribed by the donor in full. And the one, uh, the one, uh, donation we have is Homecraft School, Homecraft PTA, and that's to Wolfridge Grade 5 and the amount of $5,393.
Okay.
Should I move that right now?
Yep.
And so I will move, uh, resolution B-3-15-3244.
Second.
Okay, seconded by member Walty. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution B-3-15-3244, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Go ahead, member Westholm with the next resolution.
Okay, the next resolution, authorized student activity bank account signers. And I remember going through this each year. And, um, it is recommended that, uh, the school board approve resolution B-3-15-3245. And that's, uh, signing the authorized student activity bank account signers. And that's on page 46. And so that lists the people that will be the authorized signers for each institution. And again, this is something we do each, each year and it's obviously important to have someone, uh, to do that. So, assigned to do that, so, uh, uh, any discussion on this?
Second.
The second? Okay, member Westholm moved it and member Lefler Kemp seconded it. Is there any more discussion? Nope, seeing none, let's vote on it. All those in favor of resolution B-3-15-3245, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. And keep going, member Westholm, the next one.
Okay, the next resolution is, uh, we're going to go to that one right away, adoption. Let's see, am I on the right one? Yep, adoption of the considerations and investments for fiscal year 2016 budget. And it reads, be it resolved by the school board of ISD 7, number 709, St. Louis County, State of Minnesota, that the attached considerations and investments for the fiscal year 2016 budget as presented to the school board be adopted. And we have a copy of the latest ones and I suppose, um-
Let's see, can I have a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by member Harla. Um, and now we can have discussion. So, let's see, I think Superintendent Granseth, I'm going to start with you because I know you have some things to say. Go ahead.
I, um, I just wanted to remind everyone that this is a preliminary budget. It's, it's bound to change a bit before the final budget in June. And there, there are a few things on here, um, that have been updated since you've seen it last. One of them was, um, in a further investment in AEO, the online education, um, piece. But there was also a piece added to revenue to recognize the, the number of students that we hope to bring on, um, for our online programming. Whenever we start a new program like this, it takes some investment on the front side to be able to really get it operating. And this is our, this will be our second year. And so there's, uh, some recognition that we will have an increased number of students, which is going to take some increased investment, but we'll also get that revenue back. It's really, uh, we have grown this program within ALC. And it's growing to the point now where we need to divide ALC and AEO. And so, uh, these numbers represent some of that separation, uh, that you see there. Um, there are also some other pieces, um, that may change a bit, uh, such as the immersion specialist. Um, the, adding the first grade in Lowell, like you heard earlier. Uh, we have strong numbers for kindergarten, uh, but we do have to support the first grade a bit as it was that first kindergarten class, uh, very similar when we're starting a new program. It takes a little bit of investment. That number may also be a little bit different too, depending on what level of staffing, uh, we need there. And I think- Oh, the Canvas learning. Uh, we did talk about Canvas, um, it, as being a software that helps us to really, um, bring our teaching more into the future. Teachers can upload lessons, can upload videos, they can upload their voice. And it really becomes the tool that their class can meet on that Canvas site. So they could have online discussions, they could have message boards. It can also, it has some features that if you do some assessments on Canvas, um, it can actually correct the assignments and enter them into the gradebook automatically, um, which is very helpful to our teachers, allows them more time to work on, um, building instruction and PLCs rather than, um, having to hand correct things. But it also allows our teachers to compare what they're doing in classes as well. So it's just a, a very, uh, good tool, especially as we use more and more technology in our classrooms. It allows teachers to build, um, some online portions into their classrooms. And if there's more questions, I'd be happy to answer to.
Thank you, Superintendent, because I know I had a couple of concerns about a few of these things and I'm glad it's still fluid. Member Johnston.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, you had a couple of questions I've got here on new additions. And you mentioned it a little bit, but up on the top, there's a savings of a, uh, AEO enrollment gain. That's, I think that we've got more enrolls. You were predicting more. It's going to bring in more revenue. Is that? Okay. Then the, um, oh, down on the investments, uh, AEO additional investments. That's, we're investing into that program to, to get that return, which is good. Just to make sure I'm understanding what you're doing here, okay. Uh, you have a big item here that you added, which I'm in favor of. Uh, again, use a portion of committed operational savings for the budget, uh, $600,000. And, um, you know, I don't like the word operational savings. I think that's a little bit, but let's hold that discussion for another time. But I think that's good to take some of that money. And I think that is, that will be helping for our budget. Do you know where you may put that? Any questions on, I mean, hiring more teachers, um, or any, 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 any ideas on that?
Well, you can see that the, the savings in 16, the top section, is equal to the bottom section. So that they equal each other.
Okay. Okay.
Um, if, if we were in a spot where we didn't use all of the funds there, because like I said, some of them may shift and change a bit depending on our needs, then, um, we could talk about if there was further revenues, they could be, um, invested in class size or other, other needs.
Okay, I know back on the March 9th sheet there, we did have, um, have, had a deficit on that. So that's, that's good to see that we don't have to cut. And then it means, at least we're not cutting into any of the teacher potential money that we could do on that. And that's, I like that. Um, I'm going to hold off. I, I may have one more discuss-
Superintendent, go ahead.
Um, I forgot to mention a really big piece. Uh, this being a legislative funding year, um, it, we don't have our final numbers yet. We don't, uh, until the legislative session is complete, we won't know if we're having, uh, some added to the base, which then we would be able to talk about how we would like to invest that or use it into the future. Or on the opposite side, if there are further mandates that aren't fully funded or half-funded or not funded at all, that we would really have to be looking at these investments and seeing what we were, would take out to address those issues. So that's another reason why this remains fluid until we have, um, solid numbers from the legislature this year, although I'm very, very hopeful.
Member Walty.
Yes, uh, in that top portion of, uh, of the budget considerations and investments, um, we have, we have, uh, savings, which would be cuts, uh, that, uh, balances out the additional investments or new spending. Uh, we have, um, used portion of committed operational savings for budget. Which, what portion are we talking about? What is, what does that, what does that mean? Used portion of committed operational savings for budget. Is that coming from something in particular or?
I will defer to Mr. Hanson on that to explain it further.
Uh, currently we, uh, recognize, um, and I'm, I'm, don't quote me on these numbers or whatever, but basically we recognize about, uh, uh, $3 million or $3.6 million more in operational savings than what we need to, um, have in the general fund to pay some of the debt issues that are required to be paid out of the general fund, as we've talked before. Right now, those extra monies are going to build back the fund balance, um, because of the fact that it had gotten so, as low as it had. As we continue to, um, improve in that situation and look at the possibility and move towards the possibility of selling some of our properties, that most urgent issue on fund balance buildup becomes less of an issue, uh, potentially. And so this is using part of that difference, um, to sustain, uh, those investments that are listed in the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Let's see, member Lefler Kemp.
I just, uh, was hoping, uh, Superintendent Granseth or Mr. Hanson, you could just kind of walk people through kind of the process, um, that we're going to be using to have these discussions to get to our June, um, date we need to vote on. And, you know, you alluded to, you know, the legislative session that won't end till May, so we won't, uh, know some numbers then. I, I imagine, uh, we'll share some of this information when we have, I think, kids' conversations. And, um, so I'm just, if you could kind of let the public know kind of where there's input.
Certainly staff, um, district level staff, uh, begin some conversations in our cabinet meetings about, uh, departmental needs, departmental changes. Sometimes it's new requirements, new mandates, things that we have to put in place. Uh, we also include the QSC, which is our labor management group. Uh, we talked about a little bit earlier that has representatives of principals, teachers, school board, district administration, uh, union leadership. And we really just put everything on the table. We, um, say, well, here are all of our revenues, here's our projections, and let's talk about, um, what we would like to see for the budget. And it's been interesting the last couple of years because the previous 20 years have been to get together to talk about how could we save money, how can we reduce the budget? And it was, um, really big numbers that we're talking about, $5 million, $7 million, um, each year that we're looking to reduce the budget. So, uh, the last two years have been, um, a, a different conversation because we're talking about how can we invest, although there's still, as you see from the savings list, conversations about where we can find efficiencies, uh, to, to make investments where we want to. So we do get input through the QSC. And we also, um, have committee of the whole meetings with the board. And we will, um, be having a few more meetings before June to continue these discussions, uh, especially once we get those numbers in, in May or maybe even June after they figure out, um, what all of the new legislation means. So we are always, uh, sharing this information as well. And open, uh, we've opened it up to the public in the past to get, uh, input and feedback on these items as well.
Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we had the committee of the whole meeting, I think, starting, was it in February or January, whenever it was, we had put a discussion, and I didn't bring the spreadsheet with me here. But part of the, part of the, the good outlook we have, at least on a, on a short-term basis or, you know, immediate term basis here, all positive stuff is selling Central. And that was, was good. We're talking about that, taking, put of that, building up the reserve fund, a lot of alternatives like that. So, uh, that's, you know, we're all glad that we hopefully have sold, uh, Central here and that money will start coming in. There's one thing, and the way this resolution is worded, I don't, don't really like it because this does kind of sound like it's chiseled in stone. Because I would like some more discussion. And one of the discussions I would like to include is that since we do have this, this, this money, we know it's a one, you know, the $10 million is only a one-shot deal. Uh, but I would like to see us moving, implement seven-day period at the middle schools up to the, the top of the chart. And I'd like to see some of that money that was, uh, hopefully from Central to be used for that. I think it's a risk that we have to take. We know that's a, that's a thing that's going to go on for a long time in the future. Central money isn't going to last forever, but I think it's something that we as a school, we as a community, everybody's asking, we can get, uh, again, a better music, uh, feeders back into our high schools. And I think that is something that we should do. And, yeah, I was thinking about making a motion to include this, but, you know, again, this is kind of a, I'd like to think this is fluid and I'm certainly willing to hold on to that motion for the future, but I really would like to see the board actually discuss putting back seven, um, the, implementing a seven-day period back to our middle schools. I think it would help bring back students. I think it would do a lot for us. And I think that's just discussion that I'd like to have. Maybe I'll ask, uh, maybe Madam Chair, I could make a motion for that or could, can we have more discussion on this? I can certainly hold off. I don't want to necessarily make a motion on this to chisel this in stone, but I certainly, uh, can I be assured that we're going to have further discussion on this?
You know, I think, um, you know, that is part of our discussion, what we're going through. But I think, um, since this is still fluid, I mean, I was going to say something about that too. But I think when we look at this, I know, I've talked to administration a little bit about some of my concerns about some of these things, but knowing that we're still going to have more discussion about this, I think it'd be better to hold off right now. And, um, I'd like a couple of other board members to weigh in on this. But I, I know that we're going to be, like I said, we'll find out what we get from the legislature in the next two months because they'll be done the end of May. So we don't know for sure. I know I would like to see the seven-period day, but right now I think we need to wait and see for sure what we've got, so.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll hold off on that most then, but I am looking forward to that discussion. I think it's something real important for us to have.
Okay, member Harla.
Well, I was going to comment on one other thing, but want to, um, pipe in a little bit that it's important to talk about the offerings that we have for students and so, and also making investments that we can sustain. So I would really love to look at a seven-period day, but also I'm encouraged to see that the administration has talked about looking at other options for offerings, whether it's actually eight classes that are offered or different types of scheduling so that students do have diverse opportunities, yet at the same time, it's a little bit more cost neutral. cost-neutral and sustainable. I'll go back to '93, when my brother was going to be graduating from Central, and they were talking about when it was going to close. And I graduated in 2002, and everyone was talking about, it was about it closing, and I don't want to say, we'll do this for a couple of years, and then have to reel back, and go forward, and go back. How are we making sustainable decisions? I would, I would really love it. I would be in favor of, of adding, if we had an assurance that we'd have consistent funding. So, I, before that conversation we have, before having that discussion, can we, as a board, have some more information on the research that administrators are doing on the diverse offerings for classrooms that could potentially be more cost-neutral? Just asking the chair if that would be possible, or if the administration, if, or if that could be included in the discussion, I'd appreciate that. And then I had a, just, that was with a caveat to that. One of my other pieces was that, so I see that we, there's still that line that says, change to even your elections. I think that sounds great, there's higher voter turnout at that time, and we'd be able to share, share the costs with, with other entities in the community rather than just one. How would we do this? And how have other districts done it? And this wouldn't just mean that, this wouldn't set the dates by doing this, it would be by board resolution? Can, can you talk, can someone talk this through a little bit more? I'd like some more information on that.
Yeah, I would just, I would suggest to the board that what you're passing here, considering here, is a framework for us as we go ahead with our work to, to work this budget to a dollar amount that you'll vote on in June. Along that path, there will be additional discussions. Along that path, there will be things that we have to do to implement some of these items, or move them towards implementation. And to the question that Member Harla just raised, regarding the even-year election number and the savings that goes with that, that'll be a discussion that the board has to have in terms of how to implement that. And, you know, we can pull together some of the information from the MSBA that's available to, for you to consider, but there will be a future resolution that the school board will consider before that gets implemented, that in no way, shape, or form would be done based on this resolution tonight and this list.
Member Lefler Kemp.
Yeah, I, thank you, Mr. Hanson, for kind of describing it as a framework. I think that's important when we are talking about why we're having this discussion right now, and also, why I had asked Superintendent Grunset, just to kind of lay out the process so people kind of understood that what we're adopting tonight is, is really to keep the process moving forward, and to also, you know, find out where we need information gathered. And, you know, many of the items that are on here stem from previous discussions with us, as well as with staff. And so, things like the seven-period day came from other board members as well, and that. So, I appreciate just making sure people understand, this is just a framework as we continue to move through this process.
Okay, Student Representative Goosens.
Yeah, just one really quick question. I just want to clarify, under operations and instruction, there's one option that says to limit high school schedule to six classes. I would assume that would mean the elimination of the zero-hour period for ninth through 12th graders entirely, or?
First of all, just a reminder that anything under that bold line is just a consideration, and not something that's being recommended. It doesn't eliminate the zero hour, it limits to six classes. So, meaning if you took zero hour, you would have five classes during the day. The reasoning behind that, why that saves money, is because when students take seven periods, when we're on a six-period day, there's one period that the state does not reimburse us for. So, we are creating, well, we're creating some unreimbursed expense. So, for every student that takes seven classes, rather than six, we lose out on the money for that credit. I know it's a much larger, more complex description, but that's the, the basic, the basics behind it.
Thank you. Okay, anything more on that? Okay, I think what we're going to do is go ahead and vote on that resolution. Resolution B 3-15-3246. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. All right, we are going to move back to Member Westholm with the remainder. Oh, let me turn you on here.
Okay. And then, 5D, and I don't think we had anything here, place holders, so then we move to 6, informational, and I don't know that we have, oh, we, I do, I think we can slide down to D, we've got expenditure contracts, revenue contracts, none, other contracts, none, and D and E, I think Mr. Leiter has, probably has some information about those items, so. Am I correct? Or did I miss you, Mr. Hanson? Is there something that I?
Thing to highlight.
Okay.
In those reports.
We just want to move the remainder of the report down.
Okay, all right.
For Westholm.
All right, I move the remainder of the business report for?
Seconded by Member Murnicki. All right, so let's, let's see if we have any, now it's getting late, everyone, it's almost nine o'clock. So, are there any other discussion items to be pulled? Member Johnston.
1F.
Say that again.
1F, and 3B.
3B?
Correct.
That's it? Is there another one? No. Okay. All right, we'll go back to 1F, Waddams.
Member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see we've got 15 more enrolled this month, and I'd like to see that number keep going up here, that would be great. I do have a question, here's a different question, which I, I've, I've asked, but I'm, I'm confused. In the third column on projected ADM, this is on page 33, again, I add up this column, and do every month, and that comes up to 8197. The column, the first column, which is the March enrollment, has 8426. Now, I understand that the projected one, I think you've said, Mr. Hanson, that is what you think is going to be the final number, is, could you, okay, you don't have to say it, if I'm correct on that, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what you're thinking is going to probably be at the end of the year, is that accurate enough?
Basically, what we're trying to move from there is, you know, from a head count number, which would be the first column, to an average daily membership, which recognizes that if we only have a student on a part-time basis, that by the time you get to that third column, then they're, they might be in there at a .5, or a .6, or something like that, as opposed to a 1-0 in that first column.
Okay, that, that kind of bounces every month, you change that, is there, is that just based on what, what you're seeing as, like, part-time students, or what you're projecting through historical data, or?
We take a look at the historical data, and we, in this case, we take March 1st data, and then compare it to year-end data, and we say that, you know, there, we establish that ratio relationship from, at each of the grade levels, from a March 1st number to where we end up at the end of the year, and we create a ratio for that, and apply it to then the actual March 1st numbers that we're seeing.
Okay. And, we get reimbursed, we get reimbursed by the weighted daily average, or by the ADM?
By the weighted average daily membership.
Okay, so that's where that comes from. Okay, now, one, the other question I've had here, which is brought up, is that we had the RSP report on the demographics, looking at their numbers, their numbers, their projected number for this year, 1415, was 8325. And again, I'm just trying to find some relationship between all these numbers. I'm assuming that this projected ADM, and at least they put it down as, I think, I thought it was actual enrollment, but, and what's, what's the connection now between, say, that number and RSP? I'm not sure where they got that, I guess I'm asking where they got that. That 8325 was also somewhere to the auditor's number, when she did that projection as well, was somewhere in the 80, 8300 area. So, do you know where those numbers came from?
I believe the consultant's numbers for the demographic study were actual head count numbers, and they would have started from data that was provided to them, I don't know if it was October 1st data, it was sometime last fall. So, they would be using actual head count data to extrapolate.
Which would be the first column, kind of comparable to what's in the first column.
Correct.
Okay. I did notice in their report, too, that they had us an increase, that's RSP, I mean, that's obviously their projection, but they had a slight increase for this year compared to last year, and it doesn't, it doesn't seem to be quite likely over what the trend we've been seeing, and I know we've projected in our budget that we're going to have a reduction as, as does the projected versus the budget. So, so again, thanks for those explanations, but it's, when you see so many numbers bouncing around all the time. And one thing, one thing I don't think I've seen, and maybe you've got it, but when the final number comes, I know you've said that, that goes to the state, and when that comes, I think you ought to, in September, or something, when it, for it goes in. Could we get that number, you know, with this projected ADM, what, when the school year is out, what is that final number? Is that where we won't have to guess anymore? When that happens, could you get those numbers to us? Just asking for that, come, come July, or something?
I do have a mental note of that, which isn't necessarily the best place to keep my notes, but I know, we are still waiting for the year-end number from last year to be final. And I know it's pretty close at this point, but I'd rather give you a final, final number as opposed to one that's still off by a few tenths, or something like that.
Hey, no, I appreciate it. When you get those numbers, let us know how long it takes, too, because that's, okay, it kind of depends on some of our revenue as well, so I appreciate us being updated when you can.
Member Walte. Whoops.
Mr. Hanson, when a student is ill, does the state reimburse us for the day's absence, or do they den us?
No, there's, we still get 100% credit for that student, you know, unless that turns into a?
Permanent.
Yeah.
Okay, the next?
Chair Soligapunko, I have one thing for you, I apologize to interrupt.
Go ahead.
And Member Westholm did mention this when he was reviewing the items, but again, our discussion at the committee meeting for item 3A, the policy item on gifts to employees, I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that, I, I think your discussion at that time, and your preference was to table that, so I just want to make sure that gets handled correctly, because it's, it's not the way the recommendation has been worded for you.
Thank you. Oh, I forgot about that. So, I, you know, I would entertain a motion to table that, policy 1098, so we can have some more discussion on it. Is there anyone that would move that? Wait, Bill, did you, or Member Westholm, is that what you said?
No, it was, um?
Oh, it was our, oh, okay, it was. Member Johnston moved to table, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Westholm. Any more discussion on that? I think we do need more discussion. All those in favor of tabling policy 1098, gifts to employees and school board members, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so that carries 6-1.
We've talked about it this time.
I know, we just need to fix it. I know. So, 6-1, we'll table it till next month. All right, let's see, we have one more question, let's see, it was policy 3215. Member Walte? Member Walte, well.
I'll go ahead, it looks like. Member Johnston's willing to defer to me, I was planning on withholding this. When we, we spoke about this last, I guess I was working under the impression that, no, the state does no longer the auditing function, a state auditor doesn't audit. But I, I suspect what I heard Mr. Martel say is true, that if we're asked, if they are asked, and if they have time, they, that's what they're designed for, and they would audit us. I do think that there is our considerable public misgivings in Duluth about our finances, and I think that there'd be a lot, a higher comfort level with where we are as a school district, if the state was to come in and do a full audit, which they did not do last year. And so, I just simply will vote against the recommended change in the policy, because I do think that the state auditor would, would, would increase the confidence of the public in our finances.
Member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, there were some, we had some discussion, I sort of tried to get the information, and I had brought up that MDE does require some audits, and I did find that. I'll pass that on over to the chair, Mr. Murnicki. But this is what it was, it doesn't apply to this, but I want to clarify everybody what the MDE is requiring. This is in the Minnesota Statute 127A dot 41, the subdivision 3, in a state's, I'll just read the sentences relevant. "The commissioner shall establish procedures for conducting and shall conduct audits of district records and files for the purpose of verifying district pupil counts, levy limitation, and aid entitlements. Commissioner shall audit at least 25 districts each year pursuant to this subdivision." This is not relevant to what we're talking about here, because MDE is, they're talking about auditing basically student numbers in our programs, and so I just wanted to clarify everybody that that was what I was referring to, and I can pass it on, this is on the MDE letterhead. I don't know if they, they do 25 or not, but anyway, that's, that was just clarifying what I did say, so people know. But having said that, I do, I did hear what the public had to say, Mr. Martel, Mr. Paulson. I think that, I think there is merit to continuing with this. This says that, this says we will, of course, continue with the private audit, as we are doing now, that's what we're currently doing. All we're keeping, would be keeping with is keeping a, every five years, we would, and I think, I think this is a good idea, have the state to come in and audit us. And all that doesn't mean it's going to necessarily happen, we have, as, obviously, it hasn't happened for the last, I don't know, 10 years, or something, but I think we, just because it hasn't happened, doesn't mean it's something that we shouldn't be looking at, and I think, most of the information we've been given, the state would be more than happy to come in and do that if we ask, so I think we should at least keep it on the books so that opportunity would, when it presents itself, we should be able to do that.
Member Harla.
I just want to reiterate that we do get audited every year, it is by a private firm, and so that's Whipfly, Whiply, Whipfly, Whipfly, they audit us every year, and audit many school districts, as well as, as we've heard from the MSHSL. I did notice on here, so when you're talking about the auditors, they're, they're talking about, from MDE on this letterhead, it says, the Mars, membership audits, and transportation audits, and clerical aids and levies, so lots of other pieces there. I'll continue passing this around. But we do get audited, we just need to make sure that we're pursuant to what our state is actually able to do, instead of, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you, Member Harla. Member Murnicki.
The state can perform audits, it no longer does. I talked to a person who worked at the Minnesota Department, and he said, you know, we'll do petition audits, and again, our district went through a petition audit, but they're pretty much getting out of the business. They'll, they may spot-check 25, and we could get in line, but 3215 is 20 years old, and it can no longer meet the definition of the policy. So, if the state says, oh, we're not going to audit you, then what do we do? We have it on the books, it says, oh, you got to audit us every year. So, what we do, what we'll do is do what other districts do. You're going to look at Apple Valley, St. Cloud, Rochester. I'm also on the High School League Committee, and they're, they get audited by Whipfly, Whipfly does a number of districts. Now, some people may not trust a private, some people may not trust a private auditing firm, but a lot of people do. Whipfly audits a number of school districts, it's a reputable firm. Skewing results? What would happen if they got caught skewing results? Ask yourself that, what would happen? They'd lose their certification, they'd lose their reputation, they'd be out of They'd lose their certification, they'd lose their reputation, they'd be out of business, they'd be open to civil charges. Whip Fly, Whip Fly is a reputable firm, and it's what other school districts do. I, I like to repeat what Member Harla said, we have been audited every year, we have been audited by Whip Fly. They come in, they've done it before, they've done other districts. This is what they do. Look them up, look on their webpage, see what they do. What this resolution will do, will bring us in line with the general practice of, of a number of school districts. That's what it'll do. It's going to be a, it's, it's going to be an improvement on our policy, because the policy we presently have is inoperable.
Thank you, Member Murnicki. Member Welty.
Yeah, I simply would like to pull this for a separate vote. I have nothing else to add to my comments before.
Member Johnston.
I don't think anybody here is talking about, we don't want to do a private audit, the wording is in there. We're not taking that wording out, although if we, and we want to keep that in there. There wasn't anybody just saying that there wasn't an audit. Of course, we have to do an audit, that's, every business has an audit every year, we're like, same as any other business. And the verbiage is in there, as a private audits will be done in between every, between the five-year intervals, that's in there. So nobody's talking anything about how Whip Fly is not doing a good job. Some clarification in here is that there wasn't an audit done. There was a petition engagement, and the conclusion of the stated auditor, when she came up and did the petition engagement, was, I'll quote, "This is not an audit." And I think everybody's seen that verbiage, and it wasn't an audit. And all we're asking is, this isn't, I find it very peculiar here, that of all the policies we have, suddenly, we want to change this particular one that, that hasn't impacted anybody at all. We're talking about going through and changing, using, adopting the MSBA policies, but no, we can't wait for that, we have to change this one right away, apparently, because some people are all excited that when somebody mentions an audit. I think that in itself indicates that this, we better keep this, this in there, because there obviously is a reason for us to have this.
Member Murnicki.
There has been distrust of private auditing firms expressed today. I heard them. There is distrust of the private, I've, I've heard that in here today. Now, you're saying, well, why now? It's because we get criticized. Where is your state audit? How come you're not having a state audit? I've got emails, how come you're not having a state audit? So I'm saying, well, this policy can't be applied anymore, and that's why. I'm reacting to complaints from citizens that say, you should be having a state audit every year, and I looked into it, okay? And that's why, it's, I'm not afraid of anything, I'm ready for Whip Fly to come in and do this. I think, I think what I did, when I looked at this, after receiving emails, and after receiving complaints, I said, okay, let's take a look at that, and that's what it is. Now, the petition audit you mentioned has nothing to do with this. What this is, is the school board shall conduct a financial audit, and we're going to be, again, doing things that the other school districts are doing.
Chair, can you call the question? Yes, you can call the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Murnicki. On, Member Harla, you, you called the question, and it was seconded by Member Murnicki. What is your point of order, Member Johnston?
Member Welty and I had our lights on, and somebody just kept yelling, calling the question, they have to, they have to take their turn like everybody else.
Actually, I can do that. As a Chair, this has gone on too long, it's already after nine, so I'm, we're going to have a separate vote on policy thirty-two fifteen.
Appeal this, there's another Chair.
Okay, you can appeal the decision of the Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Member Welty, all those in favor of appealing?
Debate, point of order, we have debate on appealing decision of the Chair.
My second point of order, the debate is not, no, it isn't.
No, yeah, it isn't, you're right.
Wait here, we, we, right on the top, I gave a debate this morning, debate is.
Because Member Welty asked for a separate vote on this, so we're going to vote on this policy.
I'm going to move it.
Yes, Member Welty?
Just, I had consulted with Member Murnicki, and he said this is a first reading, it's not necessary for us to vote in a first reading. In that case, I withdraw my request, wait, I will wait till the second reading next month.
Okay, so we're going to move on and have a vote on the, the complete business committee, the rest of the report. All those in favor of the business committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So that passes six one, and there is nothing else, because we already did the other special resolution, and I'm going to adjourn this meeting.